All right, six o'clock I'll call the meeting's order and we'll pause for a moment of silent reflection. Lucas, you want to lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. Willie, you want to lead us in the roll call, determination firm?
Be glad to. Steve Danny.
Here.
Corey Hall.
Here.
Jerry Burmeister.
Here.
Ryan Williams.
Here.
Bruce Skaggs.
Here. Five out of five, form has been established. Approval of minutes from the April meeting. These should be in the Google Drive. Any questions, comments, concerns about these minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the minutes as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the April 11th, 2024 minutes as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. First on the agenda tonight, we have the Indiana DNR Arbor Day Poster Contest Awards Presentation. Denise will talk to us about that.
Yes, good evening, everyone. So with me tonight, I have Dr. Kenneth Lau and Carrie Dodd. They are members of the Pendleton Urban Forestry Committee. We've got President Carol Hannah, wish she could be here tonight. She's out of town. And then we have Jeanette Isbell. She is working this evening and Joe Scott. She is not well. She's come down with some sickness, so she wasn't able to be here with us. But on behalf of our committee, we are thrilled to recognize 12 very special young individuals tonight. Our urban forestry committee had recently partnered with the Pendleton Intermediate School, and we worked with the fifth grade class, four fifth grade classrooms on this project. And this project was the Arbor Day Poster Contest that was hosted by the Indiana DNR Division of Forestry. And this year's theme was Oak Trees, Superheroes of the Forest. So we had a lot of fun with this project, with the, with this group. And for this project, Indiana DNR had invited all fifth grade students across the state of Indiana to participate in this poster contest. And what they were tasked to do was to focus on that theme, Oak Trees, Superheroes of the Forest, and create original artwork, their own design, their own craftsmanship. And then the school was charged then to conduct a school-wide contest to then identify a top school-wide winner to be the entry for them to be represented in the state contest. So in about just five weeks, this amazing team at the school, Pendleton Intermediate, led by the principal Melissa Hagerman, we also have with us Kim Collier. She's the lead for the fifth grade class, classes. We have Bethany Beaver, Beth Landman, Sarah Reagan. And then also, the art teacher Kirsten Gray was a big part of this project. So within that five-week span, they were educated about oak trees and the importance that they play in our environment and the many benefits that they give us. The thing that was very cool about this project, every fifth grade student produced their own poster. So we had about 100 posters that were created over that span of five weeks. So to determine that school-wide winner, the school, they identified with their judging panel, the top three winners of each of the four classrooms. Then from there, it kicked back to us. And so we had town staff, and we also had the urban forestry committee members. We voted in on the top classroom winner of each of those four classrooms. And then from there, those four top winners, then the school administration, they identified their school winner to then be entered into that state contest. So on April 10th, we got to meet with the students. We got to give them a certificate for every student for their hard work on this project. We also gave out the top 12 winners for that project. We had prizes that, we had many of our local businesses that donated prizes to go towards them. So they really enjoyed that. It was a lot of fun. It was a great community project. But tonight, we'd like to recognize and honor those 12 students. And we'd like to do that before you as town council. We'd like to also do that before the community at large to show our appreciation, to show our thanks for them for being great community and tree stewards, and to inspiring those to become tree advocates as well. So tonight, unfortunately, is a very busy night at the Pendleton Intermediate and Pendleton Elementary. So we only have been the one, very special one with us tonight. And our family's here to support her. But we got a lot of school activities that we're kind of competing with, but we're very thrilled to have one of them with us tonight. I still would like to mention their names. So for the eight honorable mention awards, we have Kendall Blair, Scarlett Myers, Myla DeShong, Judd Roberts, Wrigley Coulson, Jane Ginther, Brady LeBeau, and Abby Bootner. So they were honorable mention award winners. And then for our top four classroom winners, we had Izzy McElarney. She was in Reagan's, Mrs. Reagan's classroom. Mrs. Beaver's classroom top winner was Ava Wells. Mrs. Collier's classroom top winner was Amelia Perdue. And then we have Mrs. Lammon. She couldn't be here tonight, had a conflict. But her top classroom winner was Nora Bishop. So at this time, we would like for Nora to come up here. Nora, we would like to present you with a certificate. This is Nora. And I also want to point out that Nora is the top school-wide winner as well. So she, yes, we would love to be able to gather a picture. We would like to present you this award. If you would like to, you could go and you could shake the hands of all the town council members. They would love that. That certificate has been signed by the town council president. So as you can see here on the projector, this is her poster that was the winner overall. And if you don't mind, if you could come in maybe the center, I'd love to get a picture for our urban forestry committee.
Would you like, Harry and Dr. LaSagne too?
Yes. So we'd love to grab a picture real quick. And then we'll make sure we get, go on the doctor. And Marissa, I need to get a window and say, there we go. Wonderful. I think Jerry, go over a little bit closer to Willie. Okay, there you go. One, two, three. Okay, wonderful. Nora, we'd like for you to stay standing there because we have more to announce. So as you recall, Nora's entry was entered into the state contest. And on Arbor Day, we received great news that Nora was, had earned second place in the state contest. There were many applicants and entries this year. And so Nora, you, we are very proud of you. We so appreciate you being a great representation of the community. And the DNR, they are actually in another state far away. They could not be here to present this to you. They would love to have been able to present your award. But this is your certificate from the state of Indiana, from the Indiana DNR. And they also gave you a tree, a book on trees. All your future endeavors and education and inspiration on being a great tree steward. So we really appreciate. And also, because of you winning second place, we also would like for Mrs. Kim Collier to come up here and to receive then the packet that goes to the school. So this is an educational packet on materials and art supplies. It was donated by the Indiana Tree Farm. They work with the DNR on this project. So there's all kinds of cool things in there for the students, not only this year, for years to come to enjoy. So thank you very much for partnering with us on this project. We had a lot of fun and congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay, windows, please, everyone. One, two, three. Okay, got it. That's it. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Good job.
We love passing out awards. It's our new favorite activity. Okay, moving on to the Kirk Treasures Report, we have claims from January, February, and March.
Correct.
Willie, anything you'd like to share about?
We're working on our ADP payroll system. We have a few bugs with it, but I think we'll get it worked out here soon. So that's about it. Our default, Nora.
Yeah. Anything we need to highlight on January, February, or March in these claims? Any questions for Willie regarding the claims? If no questions, I will entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second for approval of the claims from January, March, or January, February, and March?
It's not good.
I have a motion and a second for approval of the claims for January, February, and March. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Willie, anything for a Kirk Treasures report you want to add?
Nope, not for that time.
Great. Moving on to new business, the first item of business ordinance 2412, authorizing to issue two series of economic development revenue bonds and authorizing other actions in respect thereto, and also Resolution 247, approving order of the planning commission approving resolution from the RDC. These two items go together. That's why I introduced them together. Tom, we have Tom Pittman, who is online as well as Matt Prushe.
Yes.
And they have information to share with us about these. Go ahead, Tom.
Okay, thank you. And I hope you can hear me okay. Can you?
Yes, perfect.
Okay. As you recall, there was a prior approval of a community development agreement and a supplemental community development agreement. That agreement contemplated, among other things, the creation of a TIF allocation area. The process for that starts with the redevelopment commission. That's been done. Goes to the plan commission for approval. That's been done. Then comes to the town council for approval. And again, that resolution relates to approving the creation of the TIF district that will generate the TIF to be used for the incentive. Now, the, and that's really the essence of, of the resolution. The ordinance, because the incentives are done in, in the nominal form of a bond issue completely with, with no liability of the, of the town for anything other than TIF, this ordinance, excuse me a second. I apologize. There was background noise. So the ordinance simply authorizes the issuance of these bonds that are the vehicle for providing the incentive. The ordinance sets forth sort of parameter-like terms, like, you know, the, the, the term of the bond can't exceed a certain number of years. The interest rate can't exceed a certain number of years and other things. But, but again, basically what it does is it sets the, sets the maximum parameters that will apply to the bond, to, bonds to be sold to the developer or its, its, you know, selection of a, of a purchaser. But at the end of the day, what's being approved is in substance, a contract that will entitle the developer to first, for a Series A bond issue. It will entitle them to the agreed percentage of tax increment revenues. And the second bond issue relates to providing sufficient grants of, of, of impact fee dollars to account for the fact that the developer here is agreeing to do a road that is oversized for what it needs, but that the town wants it to do. So the town wants to, to, to do a, a, more, more lanes. And in fairness to the developer, and this is reflected in that community development supplemental agreement, it's, there's a mechanism built in to provide them funds in the maximum amount of the excess cost, which is about 2.1 million. Matt, do you have anything to add?
No, I, I think you summed it up well. Obviously, I can answer any questions in regards to kind of the specifics if we need to, as far as the numbers go. But for those of you, I, I know, as Tom kind of said, it's kind of boils down to an agreement when we talk about, you know, incentivizing or looking at what is a mutually beneficial agreement between two parties for a development, especially when there's things that we as a municipality want, such as the increased road size. We really look at two different types of vehicles where, one, where the town would issue actual bonds, where a bank is involved and there's an exchange of money at closing. In that scenario, a lot of times the, the municipality is bearing that burden of risk because we do have a, a bond payment that is subject to an interest rate as well. And if the TIF isn't generating sufficient revenue to make that payment, there could be negative implications that go along with that. So, you know, when we look at this type of agreement, we're always trying to shift that burden of risk off the municipality or the town in this case, which is why we, we came up with this. We went with this course of action, which is essentially, as Tom said, an agreement to split the TIF revenue as a percentage, in this case, 75%, 25%. And then, once again, we're shifting the, the full burden of risk away from the municipality in this scenario. Because if the TIF doesn't generate our expectations, that we're still not, we're not obligated to pay a certain amount. It's just 75% of whatever TIF is received. Same thing, if it over exceeds expectations, 75% of what's received as opposed to, like I said, being on the hook for a specific bond payment semi-annual. So that's all I have to add. Once again, I think Tom and I both are available for questions if there are any.
Questions for Matt or Tom? Questions for staff? Scott, anything you would like to add? You and Denise and Hannah have worked a lot on this. Anything you, any of you would like to add?
Not a lot of back and forth deliberation though. I think they're a really good agreement here.
Great. Then I will entertain a motion. Let's start with the resolution approving the order of the planning commission approving the resolution of the RDC. Resolution 247, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of Resolution 247, approving the order of the planning commission approving the resolution of the RDC. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Now moving on to ordinance 2412, authorizing to issue two series of economic development revenue bonds and authorizing other actions in respect thereto. First read of this, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
It's not good.
I have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance 2412, authorizing to issue two series of economic development revenue bonds and authorizing other actions in respect thereto. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Okay, thank you, Tom and Matt.
Thank you. Thanks for the invitation. Have a good evening.
Thanks, everyone. Have a great meeting.
Now we are going to, do I need to open the public hearing before I move on to CUMCAP?
No, you can move on and then open the public hearing after general discussion.
Okay, moving on to 2409, the CUMCAP Development Fund. This basically establishes a tax rate of 0.05 on every hundred dollars of assessed valuation for taxes payable in 2025. We've had this previously, correct, Jeb?
That's correct.
Well, I guess I should be asking Willie, Willie knows all about this too. But this just reestablishes that.
You have to do it each year.
Right. I think we missed it last year. Any questions regarding the CUMCAP Development Fund?
You answered my question.
Yeah.
Anything else? If we don't have any questions, I'll entertain a motion for approval of ordinance 2409, the CUMCAP Development Fund. Oh wait, I've got to open the public hearing. I'll open the public hearing and entertain public comment for the CUMCAP Development Fund. Okay, now do we vote in the public hearing or do I close the public hearing?
You're the presenting officer. You can close.
Okay. Citing no public comment, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion for approval of 2409, the CUMCAP Development.
Wait, second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance 2409, the CUMCAP Development Fund. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried unanimously. Resolution 2409, authorizing signatory for the INPRS PERC 77 screening submittal. This was a late add today. This morning at 10:00 AM, Mark and Lucas and Scott and I met with our friends from REEDY and also a representative from INPRS. And the folks from INPRS highlighted the need that they, or the highlighted the idea that they really needed all of our forms to be sent in. Given that we have not fully voted to establish a Metropolitan Police Board or the Pension Board, this or, this resolution basically gives me the authority to sign these so that we can submit them to the state. We plan to drive those down tomorrow and so that they can be in INPRS's hands ASAP. And so that is what this resolution allows for. Mark and Lucas, did I sum that up accurately? Perfect.
All it's for is for you to sign and deliver, basically. That's.
And it just keeps the ball rolling.
Sure. We're not opting in. We're not doing anything. Yeah. Since we don't have the two boards and we were intentionally delaying forming those boards until we knew what we were doing the first 77. This was, they told us that this was fine if I signed them. So that's the plan. Any other questions regarding Resolution 2409? Okay, I will entertain a motion for approval.
We'll make a motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second for approval? I have a motion and a second for approval of Resolution 2409, authorizing signatory for INPRS PERC 77 screenings submittal. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, moving on to item E, ordinance 2410, the cemetery fee. This basically eliminates the open-close fee for the columbarium and eliminates the escalation clause for 20, for the year 2025 and 2026. The ossuary and columbarium, those, it was an intended situation, I guess, that that would be an all-in price for those. Anything else to add, Scott?
That sums it up. So basically, we're, he said it, we're freezing any increase that planned and taking away the opening, closing fee for ossarium.
So, any questions for Scott regarding the columbarium or the cemetery piece? If we don't have any questions, I'll entertain a motion for approval of ordinance 2410, cemetery fee.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance 2410, cemetery fee. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Is it okay if we just do first read tonight or do you want us to?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. We will do first read on that tonight.
The only thing on that, the, the ordinance as rip does have June 1st as effective date for the, for the ordinance. We could, we could change that today to a different date that would be. Let's go retroactive. I think, I think if somebody came in, we would waive that fee right now.
Okay. Okay.
Good. And it's still the old fee until 25, so that, okay.
Okay.
Good cash.
So just do first read tonight. Everybody's good with that? Great. Okay, moving on to ordinance 2411, the water tap fee. We did a little bit of research on this today. We, not just today, but today was brought to my attention. This is a 25-year-old fee schedule, correct, Scott?
Yes.
Close to it.
Tap fee, so that's the cost for, for the new meter. This is for a new bill. All right, so a new meter, the labor to dig down, tap into the main, and run the line to that new meter. So these are updated price, like the chair said, 25 years old. We've decided because the two-inch and larger, those price swings are still happening as if it's still COVID. So we just put it to our traditional labor rate charges based on like rate charge ordinance and then our material plus 15%. So. Very strange.
Any questions regarding the water tap fee?
This was discussed last night at our meeting also.
Oh yeah, I forgot about that. So both the Water Works and Utility Rate Advisory Board both gave favorable.
Where do those amounts come from, Scott?
They're just quotes for the materials.
Okay.
And then the estimated labor based on our charges. If Ryan was here, he's our water superintendent. He'd probably save us a little lead.
As you pointed out, Scott, it's for a new build only.
This is our new build. Right. Now, if you had a, a large building, commercial building that was going in place of residential, then it would probably be at the two-inch, four-inch distance. So that, that, so it's, it's an upgrade.
Any other questions regarding the tap fee, ordinance 2411? No other questions, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance 2411, the water tap fee. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Are you okay just doing first read on this tonight too?
Yep.
Okay, great. Ordinance 2414, capacity fees for water. This is kind of the same idea, correct?
So capacity fee was created by state law that allows you to do this. And what this is, is think of it as a new customer coming onto an old system. So the town wasn't experiencing growth. It was designed for going backwards. In other words, trying to, as you add customers to an older system, this helps you keep that old system going. All right. Now, you know, we have a system development fee, which is different. That is going forward, the fact you have to expand your system. And that is designed for development for subdivision for homes or more, or a commercial building. So this is one that's been in place for a while. And the increase from 1,000 to 2,000 is, we haven't done it for several years. It's just based on the 3% inflation over several years. And it just so happened to, to double what it used to be. And I forget what the age of the organs was. 03, 03. So it's 20-year old also.
And this also went through Water Works and?
Yes. Water Works and utility rate advisory.
Great. Any questions for Scott? There aren't any questions. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
I have a motion for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance 2414, capacity fees for water. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Ordinance 2413, amending the video. Every month, our planning commission reviews the video, comes up with things. And they had, I think, four or five on the docket, but two made it through with a favorable recommendation from planning commission. Hannah Rose, would you like to talk about these at all?
Um, I mean, they're pretty cut and dry. This is just the language for clarity in the video as far as when we knew certain agreements signed and what kind of files we need petitioners to submit. But that's all we got through this month.
Any questions for Hannah Rose or the planning department? There aren't any questions. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Make a motion for approval?
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval. I have a motion and a second for approval of twenty-four thirteen, amending the UDO. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Since this has been through Planning Commission, that counted as our second read.
That's correct.
Okay, Resolution twenty-four dash eight, authorizing signatory for the state revolving loan fund program. This basically allows Scott to act as our agent with the state revolving loan fund as it pertains to lead line replacement, correct, Scott?
Yes.
Anything you'd like to add?
Well, let's check what Denise just made sure that that was something.
As it pertains to what, say that again?
The lead lines, so there's a whole series of things we need to do in anticipation if we find lead lines in the town, that would be quite expensive to replace them. And so uh, we wanna get all our ducks in line, so that if we have to tap into that, that we've done it instead of waiting till the last minute and then we would go to the end of the line. So this is making sure that we're upfront as far as possible, all the long list of cities and towns. Um, that may or may not have to uh, uh, ask for SRF or lead line replacement. So far, I know there was a story in the Anderson Herald that was a misprint under one of their photos saying that we found numerous lead lines, we don't, we haven't found any yet. So um, there was some a long time ago, but they, they were replaced by the water department years, years ago. And so, so far, we have not found anything.
This isn't doing anything, this, you're not pulling any funds with this, this is just authorizing you to send them the information that they need and yeah.
We have to have this in place.
Yeah.
It's a, it's one of the things on the checklist to have in place.
Any other questions for Scott or Denise? They've taken on this lead line replacement situation and it's been a lot.
Yeah.
When do you guys anticipate? Being able to say, hey, we're validated, we don't, or we do have any of these lines, well, what's the anticipated timeline to know that?
So, so the first step is we just put out the surveys, which you saw on your bill, or you can do it online. And um, so that will be the first screening. And if, if we do find something in a certain neighborhood that may lead to snowballing and looking.
Yeah.
Physically looking um, into um, other homes, residents, businesses. One of the things that makes this difficult is part of the program is that we're responsible to identify not only lead in the mains, the line, the service line that leads to the meter from the main, but also from the main all the way into the house to where the, the shut-off valve for the house is. Um, that makes it difficult because people don't have to let us in. So.
Anything else for Scott regarding this resolution?
So I guess your question is, what would you guess? I would say three years before.
Well.
Be a timeline, there's a lot of steps between there.
Yeah, October sixteenth of twenty twenty-four, every water utility has to have their initial inventory submitted to the public.
Gotcha.
Uh, we will be getting directives from EPA here in about a month as far as what that looks like as far as uh, notification, education, and so forth, working with residents that have been identified as having life service lines. Um, yeah, we will continue to update our inventory between now and probably the fall. Uh, and then probably submit that it's been submitted to one twenty water, which is the database that's gonna have everything uh, going forward. Uh, but if there are any lines that are identified as led, then that will be a part of that state revolving fund process with the PBR uh, to address that.
But I don't think you'd see the.
Yeah, yeah, construction excavation probably another year or two.
Yeah.
I agree.
Thank you both.
Anything else for this? No other comments, I will entertain a motion for approval of Resolution twenty-four dash eight.
Make a motion approved twenty-four eight?
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of Resolution twenty-four dash eight, authorizing signatory for the state revolving fund loan program, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Salt Barn bids. The Salt Barn was, I think Steve and I are the only ones that were here when we were talking about ARBA funds. Um, this was identified as an ARBA project and we are just now getting around to having the bidding process, so, but we received bids today.
Received bids today, it'll be for two salt barns, there'll be uh, timber. Steel buildings don't work well, salt underneath them, either the concrete because of the reinforcement tends to swell as it rusts. Um, so they'll be nice-looking buildings, um, not because we won't have Taj Mahals for salt buildings or anything like that, they're just, they will look nice. Um, just because it's necessary for them to be of uh, timber wood. Um, the lowest bid was a company out of Kokomo Monroe Construction Group at two hundred and sixty-seven thousand. And then we had one other bidder, bidder Fredericks, um, here from Pendleton at three hundred and thirty-five thousand. We're just asking to accept that bid. The um, engineer uh, under contract with us has reviewed them. Has not found anything wrong, so I recommend that we go with two sixty-seven from two hundred and sixty-seven thousand eight hundred from Monroe Construction.
Any questions regarding that?
That would be from the ARBA funds.
Any other questions regarding the Salt Barn bids?
Anytime Brian would, it'll be finished.
Um, yeah, it's gonna be tight to be able to be done by split salt delivery.
Yeah.
So that's one reason why we're doing this tonight, right after we receive the bids. We don't wanna wait.
But it will be done in time if everything goes right.
Okay.
Okay.
Not public.
Yeah. No time.
Yeah. Knock on timber. Any other questions? If there aren't any questions, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the lowest bid pending engineer approval, is that right, Scott?
It's a move.
I have a motion, do I have a second for approval of the lowest bid?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of the lowest bid pending engineer approval, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Do we have to do second read or anything of that nature? No, okay, great. There's no old business on the agenda, so we'll move on to department reports, I know that Aaron from the park is not here tonight. Uh, so we will go ahead and start with Chief Farr.
Good evening.
Evening.
I don't know if Lucas told you it's his birthday, he's told everybody else in town.
Happy birthday Lucas.
Alright, monthly report for April, um, Captain Trailer, Sergeant Isaacs, and Officer Westo, and all visited Fostec Rifle. Uh, because we're looking at equipment upgrades again, so they're just getting bids and prices and things like that. Uh, it's nice having Wes with us again, I don't know if everybody knows, he came from Pendleton, went to IMPD and then he came back, but while at IMPD, he was their fire ops guy. So he brought back a wealth of knowledge and we're using him for all that, so it's good to have him back. Um, I attended a career day at Maple Ridge Elementary, supposedly the kids really wanted the police there and I don't think I scared anybody out of profession. Uh, I guess I handcuffed one kid and he, he told everybody he got locked in, he did get locked in. Uh, hit everybody going. Uh, solar eclipse. I think our preparation for the solar eclipse made the day great for the town of Pendleton. Not being a draw for large crowds, uh, made it manageable and every little party I saw, they were having fun and everything went smooth, so. Uh, solar eclipse was cool to be part of and we all survived. Um, just a little quick note, the uh, days of four fifteen through four nineteen was National Public Safety Dispatcher Week. Uh, dispatchers are, are a lifeline to what's going on, they're great, so we love our dispatchers. Uh, baseball parade went off without a hitch, it was a good thing, it was, it's kind of interesting, EMA showed up, which I love our emergency management here in Massacre, love those guys. Uh, they do a whole bunch for law enforcement. But with that said, they came out for the parade as, as well as officers. And it ended up, because we had the available manpower, we had a situation where a drunk driver decided to drive through the park towards the parade, we were able to get him stopped. Uh, tased, cuffed, and placed in the squad car as the parade rounded the curb and nobody knew the difference, so it was timed perfectly. Um, total dispatch reports, uh, one thousand two hundred and ninety for the month of April. Sixteen crash investigations, the larger numbers down here is eighty-two code warnings, but eighty-eight criminal adult arrests, so. Uh, the, the adult arrests were still up there. Uh, one story in town people may not have heard, we had a subject that decided to get into a garage, hide under a car and the homeowner, which was retired fire chief Danny Gardner, was able to apprehend this subject at gunpoint and then our officers came in and snagged him up. So that's only the second time that's occurred in my time, John Garland did it once. Um, John Garland was late night in his underwear when doing it, but he did a great job, yeah. So that's an old Pendleton history story, but John Garland and now Chief Danny Gardner. And I asked Danny if he wanted to be a reserve and he said he is one and done. He didn't want any part of that. Um, and real quick, I mean, the big, big deal is we did have an officer involved shooting this week, I'm sure that's on everybody's mind. My officer, our officer is doing wonderful. Uh, small slight injury, I'm gonna meet with Caleb McKnight tomorrow from APD and actually do a, another press release in, in concert with him, so we'll get that released tomorrow. Uh, the one mistake I make is reading social media and I wanna be loud at the fact that bad guys don't just go into another jurisdiction and say, free, home base, I, I got away. Uh, an investigation in the state of Indiana, we have the full authority to travel anywhere in the state of Indiana we need to go to follow up on an investigation. So the thought that a Pendleton officer should not be in the city of Anderson is absolutely ridiculous. No more than an Anderson officer being in Pendleton following up on a crime there. Uh, I've read that over and over and over and I actually had a gentleman ask me that today and I very bluntly told him we can cross borders just like the bad guys can cross borders. And uh, the officer, our officer did wonderful, did a great job and uh, again, we'll have a bigger press release tomorrow. But if there's any questions from you guys, I more than want to answer.
Thank you, please, okay?
Yes, yep, yep.
You said that you and Caleb McKnight is Andrew Hannah going to be involved in that, the press release? I.
I, sure. If you ask this way, you will.
Well, with that being said, of course, he'll be front and center, but I had a conversation with him last evening and he was talking about releasing a statement. Kind of told me generally what he had in mind, that's why I asked to make sure that's.
I'll, I'll, I'll reach out to him tomorrow, we actually did have a meeting with all the prosecutors and the APD investigators and us and uh, just talking about what each department needed to do. Uh, APD's been wonderful, uh, they were wonderful from the, the uh, the onset of it, offering to take over the case and uh, and they brought in State Please for the measurements. Uh, there's great video, the subject decided to park right under a camera for us, I mean, it was textbook, so.
Thank God he's alright, Chief.
Yes, yes, yeah, he, yeah, the, the guy tried to murder and uh, and the officer did wonderful.
Good.
Russ, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, like I said, Aaron's not here, we have Hannah Rose's um, report in the Google Drive. And Aaron didn't submit a report um, on paper, so that's in there too. Hannah, anything you'd like to add to your department report?
Um, wow, this month is really busy for building permits, uh, we have quite a bit, actually usually we do have an uptick when spring starts and it's warmer and they can get more going in the ground. Um, Carrot Glen is very quickly coming to a close, we only have twenty-two homes left to build completely, so eight are in mechanical right now. And then fourteen lots are empty, so they haven't broken ground on those at all, but they're very steadily moving, uh, so I expect that to be done probably by fall, if I had to guess. Um, our Business Park Trail, in April, MCAG finished our RFI, it's just our red flag investigation report. We just went over that with our engineer consultant that's gonna be working on this project, so they are um, ready to go, getting all of our estimates together, getting our PE going and basically making shelf-ready plans for when we get state funding to build that trail. So that's really excited, exciting, we've been waiting a while for that, that's gonna be a really good project. Um, and then last thing I have is our mural on the side of the building. Uh, we finally decided to um, just reprint the one that's out there, which was done by George Harris. Uh, we didn't really get very many um, submissions for a new mural and that one's pretty classic, a lot of people really enjoy it, so uh, with that mural grant we got from South Madison, we're gonna reprint a new one. That's all I got.
Great. You wouldn't believe there were people who stopped at that and take a photo with it? I've been stopped by all kinds of people, will you take our picture in front of that?
Yeah.
That mural's lovely.
Well, I saw some, I must have been seniors out there the other day getting like senior pictures and I was like, wait another few weeks, it'd be a nice one without holes in it. Weathered and nature, so.
I love it. Okay, anything for Hannah Rose, questions? Okay, we'll move on to Scott's town manager report.
Okay, just a couple uh, major activities, of course, the solar eclipse. Um, but the Elm Street uh, drain reconstruction, if you still haven't gone down there, that area looks so nice and they're not even really into the landscaping yet. Um, but the last of the uh, inlets are being put in and the yard drains, the big pipes in and collecting water and it's flowing and doing what it's supposed to be doing. Uh, we received the Salt Barn bids, that's on there, of course, you should take care of that. Um, we're also doing a, what I call a minor drain project, which means it's uh, low cost or we're using mostly our um, own forces, so Ricky and his crew are out here in front of Falls Perk, putting in a small drain line. Uh, that area, those buildings in that area had a problem ever since the new sewer lines were put in. Um, that took away the old combined sewer, which included storm. And uh, there was no place for the stormwater to go, we think there's probably an underground spring in that area. So a lot of that water was ending up in basements, they're having to pump it somewhere, it was ending up on the sidewalks and the streets. And uh, it's sort of in a whack-a-mole way, so I think this last drain line that we're putting in will take care of pretty much anything uh, left in that corner between Pendleton Avenue here and Water Street. Um, the Markville Town Council invited me to come down and give our twenty-minute slide presentation on what our strategy is for growth. Um, I think they've, because of the uh, shingles plant that was gonna go in and North Adams Township in the unincorporated area, they became very interested in that and how we are looking to handle um, the expected growth. The last thing is I attended the IMMA, which stands for Municipal Managers Association, Town Managers Conference. Know that the most important thing they were talking about was cybersecurity, uh, the week before Tipton had been hacked. Um, and Brian's been through this with ransomware at the county. And um, so the FBI is telling everybody that small towns are now the preferred low-hanging fruit for these bad guys. Because usually ten, small towns have out-of-date hardware and out-of-date software, which makes you very vulnerable, know we're ahead of the game. Uh, most important thing to have is a full-time IT director, which we moved towards uh, last year. Uh, we have upgraded all our hardware and moved it off-site to um, Nine Star. And then also, we're going through upgrading, making sure all our software licenses are up to date and in place, that way the safest um, uh, prevention for ransomware and malware is in place and then um, another thing that goes along with that is um, improving what our procedures are. Also, almost everybody in the town has probably experienced this, even you have with your emails. It seemed like a week ago, three weeks ago, four weeks ago, it was very hard to get to your email. That was part of putting in a stronger um, firewall, let's say in layman's terms. And it's so good. And it's so good that even the right guys couldn't get through, right? The right emails. But um, so Jacob asked to know if you're having trouble, because some had no trouble, some had a lot of trouble. He'll go in, and if you want to take, he'll take your phone, take your iPad, and do some things. So that now you can get through to the server. Um, here's just a couple of pictures. They're not coming in so well. I do a lot better. But this is um, the drainage project. This is uh, we call it the laundry house, laundry mat house, when we were kids. Um, it was a laundry mat. It's a rental property now. It's the last house on the left. Just before Tile Street on Main Street. And it's just before the drain line crosses the, the street. There is a lot of important things happening on that property. Um, there's an inlet from. Broadway's still the worst, uh, that we have with the fire station as far as problem areas. But um, there is an inlet that runs from Main Street through their driveway to the um. New drain line, and the, it was set up that way under the old system. And so we've been fixing that because that is very important for keeping uh, Main Street dry around that tile. Street intersection. This is looking from Elm Street back. And then the next photo is just right out here in front of Falls Perk. Um, because they're working away, trying to uh, cut into the asphalt method. Um, we discovered the street is, is uh, thicker than we thought there. Remember Pendleton Avenue used to be Old State Road nine? And we knew it was going to be, it was thick and, and had a lot of asphalt, which is important uh. For when the semi trucks are, come through town when they're not supposed to, uh, the life of that road. But anyway. It's just some of the updates. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Any public comment tonight? Anybody on Zoom with any questions or comments? Nope. Anything from anybody up here? Okay, with that, I will make a motion to adjourn at six fifty two.